Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's administrative session of the Wycomico County Council, so I'd like to call this session to order. Would like to recommend that everyone keep their mask on unless they're talking and it sounds muffled, but go ahead and pull it down, but we've been requested to keep our mask on, so please do that as much as possible. So what we're going to do, we're going to continue the discussion on the procedures for selecting a new county executive, so we can begin this.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask the council to take the position of opening up the applications for county executive.
Okay. Any other discussions?
I'd like to get a consensus on that.
Second.
I've got some comments on that. We don't do motions.
Can we get a consensus first and then move on?
It's a work session, so...
Let him speak. But Ernie, did you say that you...
I second it.
You second that? Okay, go ahead, Mr. McCain.
Yeah, I mean, I don't understand that recommendation. The...I mean, we're still in our 45-day period we have until September 9th to appoint a county executive. Our attorneys have, and I see Mr. Wilbers here and Mr. Taylor, but they have determined that the conditional appointment that we did with the resolution last Thursday night and the fact that the candidate declined that, that that is now mute, is not in effect. So, you know, we did not appoint anyone, no one's been appointed, and they clearly stated here that the county council should proceed with the appointment process and offer a new resolution. I mean, we're still in the process. We've had two candidates that have, you know, we set a process for how this was going to be done. We said we were going to, you know, accept applications up until August the 11th, we were going to do interviews, and then all along, we were actually using September 1st as our date that we intended to actually vote on this, which is our last meeting, scheduled meeting prior to the September 9th deadline. You know, that is still in effect. We have two candidates that have met those requirements, so, you know, it's pretty simple. You know, we're obligated, in fact, the attorneys, I underlined this several times, because they made this comment over and over again, you know, "We should perceive a due diligence to fill this vacancy, and we need to make a good faith effort to fill that vacancy." So with that said, you know, it's pretty obvious, you know, we need to vote. We have two candidates that are, have gone through the process that we set, thus, on September 1st, you know, I recommend we follow exactly what's been recommended to us and make our good faith effort and do our due diligence and vote on those two candidates on the first.
This is not a meeting that we're going to vote on. This is...
I said, "on the first."
On the first, what you...
Vote on the first. I didn't say today, on the first.
I'd still like to propose that we open the process back up and to accept new applications. And I guess I need a consensus on that.
A consensus.
I'll give you part of my consensus. I don't understand how you can possibly suggest that you want to extend this. You set this formula, you set this whole pattern into being. You asked for the applicants, you established the deadlines, you received the three applications from the deadlines, the application period was closed, you held public interviews, public interviews, and then, I would say, you have an obligation to follow through with the remaining candidates who are still on the list. You have the obligation not only to the process that you began and you created, but you owe it to the public as well.
Wilber, can you elaborate on that?
As I said in my write-up, the charter calls for a 45-day period that ends on September 9th, and I think the intent of the charter is to make a good faith effort to have an appointment in place by September 9th. With that being said, if you don't hit that September 9th, I think you can go beyond that date.
You can go beyond that date.
That is my opinion.
And I can respect that too, Mr. Wilber, but I'm a little confused by your opinion, and I am as well as Mr. Taylor's. I don't know a whole lot about law, I don't know that much about legislative jargon, but the one thing that I've learned above and beyond all else, that there's a clear distinction between shall and may, and that sometimes makes or breaks any law in the land, and that's what we're looking at here. The charter does not say you may, it specifically says you shall, and I understand that you found, you know, similar statutes that you say could justify your reasoning to extend it, but I don't see how we can still overlook the fact that shall is shall and may is may. I mean, if look at 407(c), why don't we look at 407(d)? That says we shall pick an individual from the same party. Now, I would assume that if we were following your logic, we could pick a Democrat. So I really am a little confused as to where, 30 days after we're already into this process, we're now dealing with opinions that appear to conflict the charter.
Mr. Wilber and then Mr. Taylor.
What we found was a court of appeals case that dealt with the use of that word "shall," and the language that the court of appeals used is said as a rule of construction, when a duty is of a public nature and intended for public benefit, then the time limit is, they called it directory as opposed to mandatory, which typically, I agree, typically you think of shall as mandatory, but that court of appeals opinion, which, you know, I feel we have to work with, makes it something that I believe is of such a public nature, and it's for the public benefit that is a county executive, that if you need to go past the 45 days, you could.
But just to touch on that...
Mr. Taylor was next.
Yeah, I'll say this, I did not initially research this particular point because I knew Paul was, but I have reviewed his opinion, I've reviewed the case he cited, and I believe he also cited to a legal treatise, or maybe it was cited in the case, one or the other. There is a legal treatise on it, and what Paul has opined, I totally agree with, that's the law. Mr. Cannon, I can tell you, there are many cases on it. The general logic is that where there's no penalty for going beyond the time, then it is not mandatory, it is directory, and there's no penalty here. And if you stop to think about it, if we went beyond the 45 days, let's say that Hurricane Laura, and I don't mean the one sitting over there, let's say Hurricane Laura hit us and not Louisiana, and we couldn't do anything until the 9th for whatever reason, then, you know, it wouldn't be, we could still keep doing it.
Well, those are extreme exceptions, Mr. Taylor.
That is an extreme exception, but the rule is, and I can send you the statutory treatise on it if you want me to, but I have no qualms about Mr. Wilber's opinion.
But you're missing the point. The point that both of you made was, if we can't come to a decision by the deadline, which is September 9th, this is August 28th, we're being asked to start the clock over on August 28th, and you both have said essentially here, you know, that's not a good faith effort or due diligence, you both have said, you know, we should be following the process, you know, what we're discussing about extending this would be, if comes September 9th, we, for whatever reason, we haven't come to a solution here, but this is August 28th, so we're still in our process, so I'm totally confused as to why we're even talking about restarting a clock on August 28th.
Well, I was addressing Mr. Cannon's matter, but I would say this, in terms of the other point you brought up, Mr. McCain, I think that the council can do as it pleases, that if it wants to reopen and take more applications, it can do that. As I understand it, the initial decision on how to take applications and the deadline was done by an informal poll, referred to as a doodle poll sometimes, but it's an informal poll.
I understand that.
So there's nothing, can I finish? There's nothing cast in stone, and the council can proceed as it pleases. If it wants to open up applications, it can do that.
Are you finished?
And it could also do that before September the 9th, it could do it on an expedited basis, so that, I don't think there's any question about that.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Just because we can, by no mean makes it right, so...
Well, just because they can doesn't mean it's wrong.
And that was my initial comment. My initial comment was not...
The legal opinion?
No, that's me speaking to you.
Right.
My initial comment wasn't in reference to the 45 days. It had to do with the integrity of the process. We've done the interview publicly, we had three candidates, and just because maybe there's a problem with your voting for one of those candidates, you can't move the goalposts, change your mind, that's a discredit to those individuals that worked very hard to go through the application process. Just because you want to, maybe you have someone else in mind that you'd rather see. How is that not a disservice to us, to the public, and to the people who applied and sat for us and testified or gave testimony before us on Thursday night?
More comments? Any consensus? Hastings?
I just want to point out real quickly that, just so it said, you know, I just wanted to be on record and so folks to know that, you know, I have gone out since last Thursday night when we did go through this process, we did have, we've had a lot of folks, and I mean, a lot of folks, reach out, I've personally received well more than 100 calls, texts, messages, emails, et cetera, and all in relative support of one individual, Mr. Anderton. And then furthermore, since that time has passed, we've now have had multiple other organizations have reached out, community organizations that are trusted and respected, the Coastal Association Realtors, the local NAACP, we've had the paternal order police, a lot of other really well-respected community organizations, and mind you, I shall also say, former council members and others have reached out and specifically said, "This process, as far as they're concerned, is, you know, it should be, should be over." The public, in many ways, has spoken and spoken quite loudly for Mr. Anderton, so I don't, just so it said, I don't feel like there is a particular need to do a new process again or to go in that direction. I do feel like we have a pretty good, you know, we've done the due diligence for the public, and I think, and as Mr. Cannon pointed out, section 407(c) is very clear that, you know, with the shall, the vacancy shall be permanently filled by resolution by majority vote of the members of the county council within 45 days. So in my mind, it's, a lot of this is largely settled, and I'd love to continue to see the council really take a, you know, take an understanding and a grasp and move forward with the candidate that is really right for this position. Thank you, Mr. President.
I appreciate that. Mr. Holloway?
There wasn't a majority vote for either one of the other two candidates. That was very clear. It was unfortunate that the candidate that was, that picked, decided he would withdraw his name. He came under a lot of stress and unfortunately, a lot of things said about him and his family that should not have been said, a lot of things that, more than that, caused him to withdraw his name, and we won't get into that, that's old news, I think, but there wasn't a majority vote for either one of the other two candidates. So with that said, again, I'll propose that we open up the process to accept more applicants. Hopefully, we'll get one or two or three or four, so...
Exactly.
I just hold a second when Mr. Holloway had said that with the majority on the other two candidates, and I think that none of us here at the table are attorneys, but we have two excellent attorneys sitting in front of us, they're giving us legal advice that ultimately, that's what we need to follow. Thank you both.
And I can tell you, most of us on this council have been fielding phone calls, emails, text messages, and even voicemails all week long since last Friday, and it's unfortunate that some of the information that we were hearing, that the candidate we supported had to go through, him and his family, and I'll just leave it at that, but no person, no human being should go through what they went through. And we've had a lot of people suggest that we continue the process, and I mean, a lot of people, sheriff's office, people from these different organizations. I do know there's a lot of public opinion out there that wants this council to open the application process.
I would challenge that, Mr. President. I haven't had one phone call yet in the entire time of anybody who has said they wanted to extend this process. I'd also like to make a point too on what Mr. Holloway said. I believe we only, the vote that we took, you have to take this into consideration, this is why I think it's important to bring these applicants back up. Dr. Maris was the last vote taken.
Let's not talk about the...
Excuse me, this is important.
The candidate.
Dr. Maris.
For the board.
I understand that. Dr. Maris was the last vote taken. Now, those individuals that voted, let's say, for Carl Anderton or against Carl Anderton, could have very likely made, taken that position because they knew that they were going to be voting for Dr. Maris. Now, taking Dr. Maris out, isn't it possible, because I don't know, because I haven't talked to any of the members of the council, but isn't it possible that some of the members of the council that originally didn't vote for Mr. Anderton because they wanted to vote for Dr. Maris might now have a change of heart and want to vote for Carl Anderton? I don't know, because we haven't had that discussion yet.
That's a very good point by Mr. Cannon, because, I mean, we didn't have a unanimous vote, we had a split vote, so, and now one of those candidates is no longer a candidate. So once again, and getting back to the legal opinion, saying we should do what the attorneys say, we should do what the attorneys say, and attorneys say that the county council should continue to make a good faith effort to fill the executive vacancy by September 9th, so that's what we should do.
We're going to do that, we're opening up the process to get, we have a consensus of four people, Mr. Davis, Ms. Ackley, and Chair of Vote, not a vote, but you have a consensus.
How are you opening up the process?
I'm sorry?
How are you opening up the process? Is this 45 days? Is this going to be six months? Exactly what is it going to be? And what process are we going to have that we're going to stick to?
Do you want a deadline?
I think it'd be helpful to put in some parameters as to...
If you had one deadline, it's no longer valid.
I think we should refer to Mrs. Hurley about the deadline issue.
Hurley, can you address that?
I mean, as Mr. Wilber said, I mean, you want to make a decision as close as possible to the September 9th date. He's made it clear that you can go beyond that date if you would like. I think that council could extend the application period for however long they feel they need to keep that process open until a candidate is brought forward that you think is well-qualified.
We have a qualified acting director right now.
Certainly do have an acting county executive.
And we have two qualified candidates that we still have.
You don't have four votes, Bill.
How you know?
How you know that, Joe?
So what if we go in the process and we go vote, and we don't come up with a candidate? We deny both of them, then what we're going to do?
We cross that bridge.
You're going to cross it real soon.
It's an obligation, you know, it's an obligation, just as you'll find a state, any state that's mandated to balance their budget.
But, Mr. Cannon, our charter is different, it doesn't cover that. It's just like when you stood up and said that we get, the public, that one of us four can reverse our decision, that was embarrassing, you're telling us to change our vote because your vote didn't go. That's not in the charter, but just like this is in the charter. The charter is vague. The charter was designed for a county council. There's not a lot of things in there that governs the county exec, and this is the problem we're going through right now, because it doesn't tell us how to handle this situation. So right now, we're winging it because we don't know, because it's not written in the charter.
Relying on our counsel, our legal counsel.
I would like to, I would like to just make one correction, maybe you misunderstood what I said. I did not say that I knew any of you were going to change your vote. What I said, Ernie, was that if any one of the four individuals in this room did not vote for Delegate Anderton because they wanted Dr. Maris to be the county executive, then that individual would not have voted for Mr. Anderton.
You didn't say that at the night of the vote. I'm talking about the night we voted. I'm not talking about what you just made today.
I'm confused, I'm very confused.
I figure.
You figure what? Excuse me, Mr. President, what is it?
Any more discussion?
Can I just say, I think the intent of the charter is to try to fill this vacancy within 45 days. I don't think the charter has a condition in there as to what happens when the person chosen has withdrawn, and so we're in a very different situation than what the intent of the charter was originally drafted for, but I do think that council should do its due diligence and try to find one that is a reasonable target.
And I'd like to say, I don't think anyone up here wants to drag this process on. I think we're talking about something that's going to be a moot point. No one wants to drag this on.
Could I make just a suggestion on the timing?
Yes, sir.
I mean, we've already had 30-some days for people to consider this, and it seems to me that you could do a fairly short time period for people to submit applications, perhaps by sometime next week, Wednesday, Thursday.
I'm not sure that's enough time.
Well, they should be already listening to this, I would think, if they're all interested in becoming the county executive, and that would then allow you to, probably, I would think, unless we get that Hurricane Laura I mentioned before, make your decision by the 9th of September.
Bob, I don't agree with that, because there's probably going to be, if anybody does step forward, there's going to be a lot of questions that they're going to probably want to ask council members and staff, not only council staff, but executive staff about what the job's all about, if they don't already know. I don't see us setting a time limit right now.
Ms. Hurley, are you prepared to open the process?
I did draft a press release in case council wanted to open up the process. It can certainly be released tonight if that's what you want to do.
I feel...
I have one question of legal.
Ms. Ackley?
I'm fine with that.
You're fine? Yes, sir.
Question, in reference to shall may, section 407(c), what's your opinion on section 407(d) when it references the fact that the position shall be filled by an individual of the same party?
That still would apply.
That's not a shall, may?
The case that I...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The case that I referred to related to time, so that was the holding of the court. In a case like this, in a situation like this, if you can hit the 45 days, great, that's preferred, but if you can't hit the 45 days, it can go beyond. It's not like the process stops, nothing more happens.
Just to make it clear.
So it's a separate situation.
Thank you.
We would have been in the same situation Paul's referring to if nobody had ever applied, you know, and we had, and personally, this is my own personal feelings, is I don't know why anybody would want to put theirself through this with what the actions that some folks have taken in the past few weeks.
Help me here, because I'm confused, because we have, we set a deadline for applications for August the 11th, and we had four people apply, two of those have subsequently withdrawn, so we still have two applicants that met the requirements that we as a council agreed to do, so what do we tell these two candidates?
McCain, we've already been through this.
Help me then, tell me what the answer is, what do we tell these two candidates?
We're moving on with the process.
They didn't get the votes.
What votes?
It's very simple. That's the way the vote, they didn't...
Mr. Wilber, was the resolution on Thursday night, isn't that a mute now resolution and no longer any legal effect?
Right. That resolution, no more has any legal effect, so say from that point forward, it's up to the council to decide, you know, do you want before September 9th to hold a vote on a candidate, or do you want to just, as you've been discussing, proceed into taking new applications? That's up to you.
I think that's what the majority consensus...
Mr. President?
Mr. Hastings?
So if the council does indeed want to go forward with a setting in, with a new timeframe, then we, of course, need to set the rules, and it'd be nice if we can set here and now, set the date, and then, the second thing I'll say is, I did, among the well over 100 emails and texts and messages I got in support of Mr. Anderton, I did also get numerous folks who were reaching out that didn't feel the process that we went through was as helpful as it could be. We asked eight questions to the three individuals who actually spoke out, and then, of course, the public did not have an opportunity to ask any questions, or the public didn't have any opportunity to submit questions. Maybe if we are to go through this process, we could have a way to either have the public either submit questions, or more importantly, maybe have the public be a little more participatory in this process, though I'm, of course, it is not, I want to make it clear that I do understand that it's the seven of us that choose the next individual, but I do think the public is a pretty important part of this equation, so...
You received over 100 emails, I'm suggesting that's public participation.
Yeah, they were very clear to one candidate, not anyone else, but I think going forward, I think it'd be nice to be able to have a more of a public process. If the majority of this group does indeed want to go forward and have a new process, then I say, let's revamp it and make it a better process so that there's more public participation, and, yeah, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Would that be a charter amendment or a charter change if they revise the process of selecting a county executive?
To be clear with process, I mean, just asking questions, not going through a different resolution or anything. When I say a new process, I mean, specifically, I mean, having the public more involved with asking questions or participating in some sort of level.
You can open a candidate, you know, we're having enough trouble finding a candidate, candidates anyway. I mean, you know, we're talking about a county with over 100,000 people, and you say you got 100 emails, and that's a very small percentage, but out of that 100,000 people, more than 100,000, you know, we only had four, three people really apply, you know, three people that were eligible, I'll put it that way. So that's not a very good, very large pool to choose from, so I think, staying with where we were at as far as the questioning, as far as I was concerned, it was fair, other than, I think there was probably some of the candidates may have had the questions ahead of time, from my understanding, so maybe we can improve on that a little bit next time.
Include more questions and make it more detailed.
Interesting, we, Mr., I think Mr. Day brought out, we didn't mention agriculture at all, one of our, you know, our number industry.
That would be a great question.
I think we could...
We had no questions about education.
Yeah.
Biggest part of our budget.
Actually, we had a response on education, it was the STEM program for schools.
The word STEM was mentioned one time, Ms. Ackley.
That's all right.
I'm just saying, we did have a comment.
Let's not argue about what we did do, let's move forward with what we're going to do. We've got a consensus to open the process back up, and I think that's the direction we should head, okay?
No further discussion, move for adjournment?
Excuse me, I don't think you're done. How long are we doing? This is a public hearing, this is an open work session for the...
I set a time, John.
Excuse me?
We have not set a time.
Asking, we need a consensus on this.
We can figure that out.
What do we, I mean, I need to know exactly what are we going to do from here? Are we going to have a public hearing on this? Are we going to, what might the, it's a work session.
Ms. Hurley, what was in place that we received?
I think what he's asking is, you know, besides opening up the application process, do you want maybe, as Josh suggested, a public input session, maybe, I don't know if you want the public to actually interview the candidates, but at least have a public input session, and then, you know, obviously, council would need to interview the candidates, I think...
If you do that, I would recommend doing it on two different nights.
Absolutely.
I think this is just as important, if not more important, than most legislative bills we've ever passed, where we do have public, I think this should be a public hearing, we should have a public hearing on this. Everybody can say anything they want about how many emails they got, how many phone calls they got, but I don't think the real, the real true test of what the public is asking for is going to be obvious until you have a public hearing.
But, Mr. Cannon, it's not in the charter to have a public input session, but I'm agreeing that we can do that.
I recognize that, I'm just saying...
So I'm agreeing, we can do that.
And I think we need to know, what are we going to do? Are we going to do, are we going to do another... Are we going to do, are we going to do another 45 days? Exactly what are we going to do? I think the public needs to know what we're going to do.
Need to nail it down right now for a day?
Mr. President, can I just ask Mr. Wilber and Mr. Taylor a question? If council were to open up the application process for a specific time period and no applications come in, do we just keep extending this? Or should we just have it where it's open until someone is qualified that applies?
Personal opinion about a process, I think you should have a definite, apply by a certain date. You all know by the charter that Mr. Posoda will continue to act as county executive until the council appoints one. So I think you should have a definite date. Hopefully, there will be applications that will come in. And then, as you've been discussing, if you have a public hearing, fine. If you then have just a council hearing, fine. That's, you know, the charter doesn't guide us, so you have to make up your own process.
Make that middle.
I agree with Mr. Wilber. I think you'd be wise to have a time certain for filing applications. And as I said earlier, I know Mr. Holloway feels a little different. But given the fact that this has gone on for some time, I think that deadline could be pretty soon, sometime next week, I believe.
Holloway's going to make a suggestion.
I won't debate it with you, but, and so you can get on with the process. Now, if nobody applies, then, you know, we're kind of back to square one.
That's where I'm going with it. I mean, because, you know, last time, we set a date, and then no one applied until the-
Last day.
The very last day.
And that could happen again. But I mean, if you have a deadline, then they know what the very last day is. And so it at least gives them some-
We'll set it for-
Nothing happens unless you have a deadline, just like when I was in high school and college studying for a test, it's the night before.
Mr. Taylor, Mr. Holloway, you going to make a suggestion?
I'd suggest September 15th. We've got Labor Day involved and holidays, you know, that weekend, which will be, takes a lot of people out of the loop. So I would suggest September 15th.
September 15th? Are you okay with that, Ms. Ackley?
No, I would just like to have this done as soon as possible. I think the 15th is reasonable.
All right, I'm good with that. Anybody else?
I throw, maybe, I was going to say, maybe it might be helpful, maybe the September 15th is a council day that we're meeting. Maybe the day before, we might, it might be nice to let the process, let the public know that we're moving through this process, and we could, you know, announce who we have. If we did it the day before, closed the business September 14th, you know, maybe that could be a, then we could, then we could start a new council day, knowing that we-
That's fine.
Day doesn't matter.
More than two weeks.
September 14th. All right, anything else? Move to adjourn?
To move.
To move. Thank you, everyone.